Jenny, will you please call the roll?
This is Casper.
Here.
Mr. Level.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Parnell.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Here. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Second? I'll second. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes. Thank you all for being here tonight. We have lots in the audience to for our student recognition and staff recognition. So we appreciate you being here. Superintendent's comments?
Just real quick, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I know it's a short school week and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I did on behalf of the board two Saturdays ago accept this trophy on behalf of companions on a journey for the district, for our building and our staff and our students' work with companions on a journey. So I wanted to just share the hardware as we go down. Bree Waterman, one of our teachers, was also recognized that evening. But it was a great gala and event and nice to have Lakota be recognized. So just wanted to share that with everybody.
Jenny? No comments from you? With that, we'll move right to students' spotlight.
All right, tonight we are proud to recognize six of our students from both east and west who received perfect 36s on their ACTs. If I could have the students come on up and I'm gonna, I did not prepare them for this yet, but in a second I'm gonna ask them to tell the board your name, what school you go to, what your plans are for next year. All right? You've got a tough job because you're gonna be first. On average, one tenth of one percent of test takers receive a perfect score. That's about 50 per state if you do the numbers. Lakota has six. This is the highest number in recent memory, maybe highest we've ever had in one single year, but at least in recent memory. We have four from Lakota East and two from Lakota West. I'm gonna ask them to introduce themselves, tell you what their plans are once they graduate. So maybe where you're going to school and then what you're gonna do with that degree. All right?
Hello, my name's Albert Lee and I'm from Lakota East High School. I plan on going to college at either OSU or hopefully a better institution like Harvard or Oxford. And I plan on majoring in either actuarial science or economics and hopefully work in the private sector after I graduate from college.
All right, hello. I'm Adrice Malik. I am currently a senior at Lakota East High School. I also intend to go to either OSU or a better institution like Harvard or MIT or something like that. I hope to major in like physics or some other like scientific research or field and I want to go into some scientific career.
Hi, I'm Alan Frank from Lakota East High School and a senior. I'm also planning to go to OSU or better institution. I've still not decided and I don't know exactly what I want to do. I'm still deciding, but probably a STEM field.
Hi, my name's Lauren Hesselbeck. I'm a senior at Lakota West. I probably plan on going to OSU and just OSU. And I'd like to major in math or economics and I'm not sure after that.
Javier Bonds. I go to Lakota West. I plan to go to UC and study, I might do chemical engineering, but I'm thinking about actually studying chemistry and entering research at a university.
Congratulations. We have one student who couldn't make it tonight. We're gonna get a picture up here with the board really fast. So if you guys wanna go and head that way, we'll get that ready.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank, it's the only word I'm ever gonna have. I can pretend it's a Grammy.
Thank you, congratulations to all of our students. For staff recognition, if I could have Kate Enning and Lori Vanover come on up. They are two of our coaches on Team Inspire. Just a little background and I don't think it's probably new to the board, but just to fill everybody in. Lakota, last year we signed the Future Ready Pledge, which is a national movement. The Future Ready Framework helps school districts with digital learning, visioning, planning, and implementation. Remember, that's when Tom Murray came down to Lakota last year and we've continued that work with Tom. He's gonna come up, not up here, but his name's gonna come up again. But the Future Ready Framework is made of seven gears to help guide district leadership, including curriculum and instruction, personalized professional learning, a robust infrastructure, which is something you need to have to launch all of this, budget and resources, community partnerships, which we've certainly done with a lot of our businesses and that continues to grow, data and privacy, and use of space and time for our students and staff. Katie and Lori realize that there is not a gear specifically for teachers and went about creating one, which I thought was impressive. Their goal in creating Lakota Future Ready Teacher Framework was to empower teachers to become more collaborative leaders in order to create more personalized learning opportunities for their students and for each other. They presented this framework at the Summer High Ames Institute, which Lakota participated in for the first time probably in a few years at Mason High School this past summer. Spoiler alert, in two years we will be hosting High Ames for all the southwestern schools that are part of that group. Tom Murray, who is essentially Mr. Future Ready, I don't know, he probably claims that himself, but he heard about the framework and asked Katie and Lori to write a blog post on the Future Ready website. So you can go to Future Ready, do a search there and Katie and Lori's blog post will pop up about the work that they've done. So I'm gonna turn it over to them and let them tell you a little bit more than what I did.
Wide open, right? I know, totally, totally not planned. Looked like we matched some of you as well. I don't know.
Well, when the future, when Matt Miller decided that he would sign the Future Ready Pledge, we started as Team Inspire started to look into what that meant for us, there were frameworks for all the leadership positions, principals, superintendent, technology leaders, even instructional coaches, but there wasn't one for teachers. And so we knew that that's where the work was going to happen and it certainly needs leadership, but we wanted to take it down into the classroom, especially in that area of curriculum and instruction. So we didn't actually write the framework, we actually pulled teachers together and had them write the teacher framework. So it's a collaboration of lots of teachers in Lakota. I know at Cherokee, we're doing Future Ready book studies where we have eight different books going on that really lend themselves to what that work will look like. And all over Lakota, we're doing Future Ready work day to day with the teachers as instructional coaches. And then we did take it on to High Ames and we had other districts. I know Indian Hill was represented and Lakota and some other districts. And that's where Mr. Coney tweeted out what we were doing and immediately Tom Murray decided that we should write a blog post, which was a little scary, but we decided that we would go ahead and take that risk and we couldn't be prouder to represent Lakota in that Future Ready Framework and Future Ready work.
Just to follow up on that, I think that there's a lot of work that we are still doing in the schools and obviously having the framework trickle down to the teachers and having them have some voice and choice in their professional development and having them choosing some personalized learning paths as well as our students. And so some of the work that we're doing is in that vein as well and that trickles down to the students and what they're doing every day in the classroom with those teachers.
It's a work in progress that will continue.
Can you, can you share just briefly, what does an instructional coach do? Like what is your role that you play in our schools each day?
It's a great question. So I think our role is multifaceted. One of the ways that I often describe it and not the easiest way to describe it, but I think one of my main goals is to help create bridges and communication, whether it be from the curriculum department into the classrooms to the teachers, but then it's also connecting teachers between buildings. But then it's also just kind of being that person to hold a hand and help teachers take risks and provide some reinforcement and best practices instruction in those classrooms.
We do about anything and everything that the teacher would need. So we wanna make sure that when we're asking our teachers to become future ready and take risks and personalize their own PD, that we're there to support them in any way that they need for themselves, for their students. So we wear lots of hats and do lots of things, curating resources, going in and modeling lessons, any initiative that the district is, you know, pushing out, we are the support for them to be able to make that and have it go into the classroom, down to the student level.
I appreciate you sharing. You know, we have a lot of teachers, a lot of staff across the district to do a lot of different things. And I think sometimes when we think about instruction, we think about just the teacher in the classroom, which is super important, really important. But we also have teachers that are growing and learning every single day. We talk about professional development that we can send them to conferences, but that's a one shot, right? You go, you learn it, you get inspired, but having coaches in our district that are able to come alongside our teachers, I think it's a phenomenal investment and I appreciate what you guys do each and every day. And thank you for your leadership around the Future Ready stuff. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Would you say that part of your work is ensuring fidelity to the standards than the curriculum that we're teaching?
Absolutely. That's always our highest priority.
That's what I was thinking as well.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
Now, just congratulations. That's awesome that, you know, you would think of that, do it, and then of course Tom would pick it up instantly on Twitter.
Like it was a minute, like minutes. Like he comes in and takes the picture and then comes back in within the same, he's like, look, you were just retweeted by Tom Murray. And he wants you to write a blog post.
That's awesome, congratulations.
What do you feel has been your greatest success that you've seen in your work with teachers in the classroom?
For me, it's just seeing them reach out to us and try things that they know are gonna professionally develop themselves as well as then give their students choice and voice. It's not easy to do that sometimes and when you have someone there to lend that support, whatever that support looks like, I just see them taking risks and becoming more and more innovative in their practice, always looking at what best practice is, and they're not afraid to try things with us there as their safety net.
I think that speaks volumes to who you are, that they are willing to take that risk. No, you have their backs.
Okay, yes, I was gonna say too, that it's really fulfilling when you see students, you know, really excited about instruction and sometimes, you know, teachers can get bogged down and there's a lot of initiatives and a lot of things on their plates. And then when we can help them kind of sort through that and be able to push through and have the students see some success and get excited about learning, I think that's a really cool part of our job too.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions? All right, let's do our picture. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, we'll now move to the update on the school redesign.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. We do have a number of people we'd like to bring through. I do have some handouts for you, so you can kind of follow along as we go. I'll pass those on. Thanks. So as we said, throughout the course of this year, our job is to look at the high school experience that we offer and to do a full review of that and to present information periodically back to you. Our first opportunity to do that was this November and so we'd like to be able to talk through a number of different pieces of that. And it's honestly a work in progress as we were just doing up until about three o'clock this afternoon. So we'll start off, as we always do, with students. We are here because of students and I deleted some of these slides out of your packet, but we are here because of students, not only the students who are currently in our high schools, but the students who will graduate in 2031 who are our kindergartners currently. We have to have an eye on that group, preparing them for their world ahead. And what I'd like to be able to do is invite our high school principals to come up and a couple of our students to come up and give you an impression of how we've gone about this work. We have engaged our students in a meaningful, purposeful, intentional way throughout this experience and we wanted to give them a chance to have their voice heard in terms of what this looks like for them. So Ms. Davis, if you can introduce our first student, that would be awesome.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce a senior from Lakota East High School. She is a go-to, certainly when we're interested in obtaining student voice because she never holds back and that's exactly what we need from our students, open, honest, frank discussions and getting the voice on behalf of the students. And I think that Bee does a wonderful job of speaking on behalf of everyone. She understands the bigger picture and she understands her role as a communicator of that bigger vision on behalf of many. So it is my honor and pleasure to introduce to you Bee Absolu.
Absalu. Charge your rest. Yeah, so as Ms. Davis said, my name's Bee Absalu, I'm a senior at East. And a lot of this stuff, I also spoke at convocation for all like students and staff are not students, but about student voice and what that means for our district and like all the increased opportunities that we've had for student voice in our district in the past couple of years. Specifically, like at East, we have our Student Advisory Council, our group of students, it's basically the bridge between students and administration. They've done a lot of cool projects and they've been working really hard to try to help create what the high school experience will look like in the future, which I think is super awesome work. I've also had quite a few, a couple of opportunities to be part of focus groups, specifically one that we did with Digital Promise to kind of talk about all of my opportunities that I've had over at East. It was even Charlie was there and like he got to speak his voice as well, voice his opinions on what kind of the high school experience should look like and like what the ideal high school experience should look like. And even like the ed chats on Twitter have been a huge push towards student voice that we're able to just hop on Twitter and say what we want and you guys read it, which is really great, knowing that you guys respond and are actively engaged and take part in those has been really cool, seeing that. And I'm also involved in Lakota East Publication Spark and I've been able to network and I've honestly never thought that I'd probably have a conversation with any of you and I've actually been able to have the opportunity to speak with all of you, even if it wasn't through Spark, just kind of in the opportunities that Spark has given me to network and kind of an outlet for my voice to be heard because we are a limited public forum, so we are allowed to say what we want and just kind of our voices are not regulated by you guys, if that makes sense. And yeah, so honestly, when I started my freshman year, I didn't expect to have any of these opportunities, wouldn't have expected to be standing here at all, speaking in front of all you guys. And so thank you and thank Mr. Coney and thank everybody that's been able to give me and every other student a voice. This has been, this whole experience has been super crazy and super, it's been a privilege to be able to have, know that I have a voice in a district as large as Lakota. Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here, Mr. Miller and the board. My gentleman, the senior, Charlie Hall, Charlie is one of our leaders in the building, a go-to when I wanna get the pulse of the building. What I love about Charlie is a very well-rounded young man. He's part of our leadership team, which was able to talk with the Ed Elements team and get the feel from about 10 kids I had in that, get the feel of what they wanted for a high school. And then he also is a part of our GMC Leadership Conference, he was a part of that, where we went to all the GMC schools and he played a big role in that. Member of the baseball team and he just was the lead, one of the leads in the play. Radium Girls, that's pretty cool, playing baseball in the play, leadership, I thought that was just a well-rounded young man, that's what we want here at Lakota, that's what we have here at Lakota. And I think Hope Squad as well, so that looked very highly by his peers. So, Mr. Charlie Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Card. Fantastic introduction. So I'm here to talk about what my goals and aspirations are for being a student at Lakota West. Coming into high school, I have an older brother that graduated from here, so I knew a lot of upperclassmen while they were students here and I had an opportunity to learn a lot. Being a part of Hope Squad has given me an opportunity to have a voice in the school and one of my goals is to change the culture of the school through an example, acting as an example. So I know, like, I will also try to be a part of as many activities as possible. I play baseball, I was in the play, and my goal is to just reach as many people as possible and set an example for the under, because it doesn't matter how cool I really am, the underclassmen are gonna think I'm cool no matter what. So as long as I act how I want the underclassmen to act, they'll follow that example and hopefully that'll influence the culture in the years to come. So, and when I come back to high school in years from now, my goal is not to come back and to walk in the front doors and people be like, oh, Charlie dude, what's up? My goal is to come back and see the changes that I had an influence on. So I don't care if people remember my name, but this is important to me because it matters to me to walk in those doors years from now and see that I had an influence on the change that was made. When it comes to having a student-centered education, it means a lot to me. Being in a lot of accelerated classes throughout my education, I've seen a lot of students struggle, a lot of students excel, and it seems like when everyone's on the same pace, there are students that fall behind and students that kind of can just sit back and relax. An example I came up with is like during math instruction, you're going over the homework and the student asks a question. It's in the middle of an instruction, so it's not that the question is not welcomed, but it kind of seems like it's interrupting the instruction. So it's important that the class should be centered around that question that was asked. So if everyone's moving at their own pace, if you understand it, you can move on. And for those that don't, the teacher's there to answer the questions for the students that are struggling and everyone else that understands it, they can move on. So that's my view on student-centered education. That's about it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. As I said, I love having students present to us. They, we can say all these things, come up with all kinds of great words, but they're not the same as having them here. And I know Bee, you've got a calc test tomorrow?
Yeah.
We'll get you out of here. Yeah, go, go work hard. And Charlie, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. So that is one piece of our, student voice has driven everything that we're doing. The designing we've done the last couple of days has been around student voice, having their voices heard. The other piece of that is something that we're calling Lakota Next. And I'd like Mr. Wheatley to come forward and talk about Lakota Next, which is a great leadership opportunity that we've created and he'll be able to kind of give you some background of what that is all about.
All right, thank you. So I wanted to give you an update on Lakota Next and kind of exactly what it is and how it functions. So Lakota Next is a group of teachers and right now we're about at 40 teachers and that number seems to be growing. I think that's one measure for success as people keep on asking how they can be a part of it. But the whole goal of Lakota Next is really about this idea of how do we expand the capacity of what we can do in Lakota? And how do we harness our teachers, especially our teachers who are growing, who are looking to grow as leaders, and give them the opportunity to help design around that change we're looking for, that change we're really seeking in Lakota? So Lakota Next team is really there to empower those teachers and give those opportunities to dive into that work, that research, and to help us create larger expert networks, peer networks, and to help to make that connection between CEO and the teachers. And so what we have today is I brought with us two of our teachers, Jen Parrott and John Severance, who are members of our Lakota Next group, and they really are great examples and exemplify this work that we're doing and the type of leadership that we are trying to utilize to help us out. And it's really about getting as many people working together in that kind of same vision and using their expertise and their skills to really increase and move at a rapid, more rapid pace than we could just do as CEO alone. And so with that being said, I'm gonna introduce Jen Parrott. She's gonna come up and talk about her role in Lakota Next.
Thank you. We split up. John is gonna talk about what we've done like from today and what we're planning on doing tomorrow and then I am covering our pre-work and what we did on our first meeting on November 6th. So the pre-work involving the design challenge, first was the empathy piece. We were supposed to gather input on the following categories, so we had passion, future, and dream school. And this input was from students and staff members. I chose to do a Canvas survey to gather information that way. I collected a lot of thoughtful responses. Most were centered on comfortable seating, flexibility with schedules, including later start times and scheduled choices. One, here's one of my student responses that characterized the hole that I got. So this student said, I'm quoting, "Start around eight, leave at two or three, free seating, be able to choose schedule so I can have my harder classes at times I'm most awake, common areas to hang out at lunch and be able to leave the cafeteria." So these were themes that we have seen like comfort, freedom, kind of flexibility. So we've seen that over and over from all of these different things. Another piece was shadowing students. Several of us on the committee shadowed students and many of the Lakota Next members then shared those experiences as well. Those went along with the same kind of ideas. On November 6th, we started the work. I met with my team, which was made up of eight members. It was a very nice cross-section. I, we had one counselor, one eight members. It was a very nice cross-section. I, we had one counselor, one ESL teacher, two West High School students, uh, one East High School student, and it just happened that one was a sophomore, one was a junior, and one was a senior, which was nice too. Uh, three teachers, one from East Maine, one from West Maine, and then I'm from West Freshman. So, we had a really nice group. Um, we bonded very quickly and uh we were able to really produce a lot of good ideas and worked well together. Uh, on that Tuesday, we worked on using all the information that we had to gather um ways to build culture, empathize with different stakeholders such as students, the community, parents, staff members. Um, we defined our challenge and we're working on guiding core principles, which would inform our next challenge today and tomorrow. So, then John is going to talk about what we did today.
I've hit two distinct stages to my professional career. I worked as a research and development chemist for Procter &amp; Gamble for about eleven years before getting into teaching. And one of the things I've learned is that change is very, very hard and that's true for everyone. In particular, when you're part of a large organization, change is really hard. It's easy to want to stick with the familiar. We want to avoid the seemingly impossible task of making that change. And so what they taught us at P&amp;G was start by prototyping. Don't try to get something perfect before you start getting ideas down. Just start writing stuff down and share it with people who are going to live with it and get their feedback. So, you pull in a dozen consumers who would use your product, you get their feedback, and you tweak it and you come back and you go through several iterations. And you just accept the fact that you're not going to get it perfect. What I'm really excited about with Lakota Next is that prototyping ideas is exactly what we're doing. We spent the entire day today sketching out schedules and critiquing with one another, and then we would leave the schedule behind and the group would walk around and move to another schedule and you started to see commonalities and you started to see themes popping out of this when the groups were working completely independently. We really had to focus on being flexible and being open, but at the same time converging, because coming up with ideas that aren't actionable for ten years isn't going to get us anywhere. So, I think we've been doing a good job of both diverging and converging at the same time. The final thing I wanted to make is I learned, and this was strange to me as a young chemist at P&amp;G, but people have an emotional attachment to their laundry detergent, into their car, into any kind of consumer product. And they don't always have the words to tell you what they want. And so your job is to get in deep and talk with people, talk to the stakeholders, and get to the emotions behind it and really try to understand their passion about school in our case, or why they want a late start, or why they're looking for more options. And don't necessarily hear just the words that they're saying, hear the emotion behind it as well. That was our day today. We'll be back at it again tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. And so our, our challenge, which is listed up here, is a, we designed a three-day design sprint, which was November sixth, November nineteenth, and November twentieth. And the idea is to um prototype the ideal student experience framework, i.e. the master schedule. Now, oftentimes if you come in and you just do the master schedule, that's all you do is you work inside that box. But as Jen and, and John said, that we were taking all sorts of ideas beyond that to figure out what is it that makes up the ideal student experience. And it was a fantastic day of work today. There were uh thirty students and thirty teachers and five facilitators at West Freshman Media Center who were just um sharing their ideas all over the place and coming up with some really great prototypes of what a schedule could look like that meets the needs of the students, the adults, the parents, the community, and that's our lens we're going to keep coming back to. And then the final test of that is a, an authentic audience. So, they'll be presenting their final prototypes to the executive team tomorrow that we will then take and figure out how do we make that into a reality. And so that's um as good a design challenge as possible and it fits right in with where we are and where we're going headed in the future. So, we will be bringing that information back to the Board of Education when we have a final design um and a recommendation for what that looks like, and that would happen right after the first of the year. The next piece of that that ties right in, in line with that is the portrait of a Lakota graduate. And so we've been working over the past couple of months to uh assemble and listen to groups of people. We've had students, we've had teachers, we've had parents, we've had community members, members of the Chamber of Commerce, we've had college admissions reps, and we've gathered all this input of what are those skills, characteristics, and attributes that we would like to see in our, all of our graduates for their future success. Um, very often that does not come back to being content-specific or handing in all of their homework necessarily, but a lot of times uh what it ends up being is uh real-world skills, those soft skills that so many of our employers tell us are so critical for having in all of our graduates to make them employable. And a sneak peek into what those look like right now. Uh, so the current results we've gathered from those listening sessions, we've had about, roughly about two hundred people who have participated in those. And then our goal in the second half of the school year is to broaden that circle out and refine the work that we have. The top characteristics and skills that we have are listed at the top right, at the bottom right of the, of the screen up there. The top right shows all of the, the demographics of different people that we have in this work, but our top characteristics or skills are not anything that would be surprising to anybody. But the next level of work then is what does that really look like and how do we measure those things every day and year by year in Lakota schools? So, that's the hard work and that's when we would be having listening sessions with our parent organizations, with community and business partners, with our elected officials, to be able to say, "What are those skills you want to see?" And how do we develop assessments around those? And we're guessing that traditional paper and pencil or standardized tests do not measure a lot of those. And so we might need to be able to think differently about the way that we assess our students and what we say is most important. The other piece of that is starting to get ourselves thinking a little bit differently. And so we've held some viewings of a film called Most Likely to Succeed. The teachers at the seven through twelve uh level uh watched this film on October fifteenth and it's a good just, we call it a pebble in your shoe. It's not the new trajectory that we're going to be looking at. It's not what we're going to adopt, but it is a lot of hard information about what the world of work is going to look like in the future. And it causes that question of, so what do schools need to look like? And it's not a baby in the bath water sort of situation, but it's also a, how do we do things differently to make sure that we're putting kids in situations where they have experiences to make decisions and to communicate and collaborate like they will have to in their futures so they're not at a, at a loss or so they're not behind their peers when they graduate? We'll be having probably future viewings of this with targeted audiences in the spring to make sure that we are getting as much information back as possible. The next piece of this that we have is we've partnered with uh an organization called Education Elements. And what they are helping us do is define what the path of personalized learning looks like for our high school students. So, as Charlie said before, that when you have, how do we get really adept at saying that every student has certain interests, skills, and attributes in classroom, in classrooms, and that if certain students are able to excel along their pathway or need some help and support, then we can have more personalized pathways for every student rather than one-size-fits-all tracks that we often have in public schooling. And so the nice thing that this does is Education Elements, as the slide above shows, will take our strategic plan and our um overall priorities as a district, tying those to our portrait of a graduate and working through and with our Lakota Next group and our leadership at our high schools to help define what those experiences, whether their courses or schedules or structures need to look like so that our students are in the best possible situation when they graduate. What this ends up looking like a little bit is we are right down at the uh, towards the bottom where that star is, in a progression. It's not a, it's not an overnight work that happens, uh, but we have been working since the summertime to uh under, for them to understand who we are as a district, to meet with our leaders, to meet with our teachers and our students, as they said. And we're just about to sort of what they call launch what our um personalized learning plan for the high school looks like. And it's, again, it's an iterative process that is not a one-time uh and done. And then what it looks like in the winter and into the spring is that support, reflect, and iterate, where we come in to do learning walks, we look at the classrooms, we come back and iterate with our teachers, we come back and come up with a plan of how do we make sure that that happens? And once we get closer to that, in that spring time period, that would coordinate with our, our May update to the board and we'll have periodic updates in the meantime. Uh, we've been fortunate enough to have Mrs. O'Connor sit on our district council, so she's been able to be um part of that conversation going on. I feel like it's very good for her to be able to define what we're looking at for the future of our high school structure. The, one of the things that I've liked about their work is that they've made it very tangible for us. They've given us what's called an on-point score. And so they come in and they surveyed all of our teachers, every single one of them. They had focus groups and listening sessions with our students. They talked to our district council and they came back and gave us a score. It's like a credit score, credit rating, that says, "Here's where you are currently" and gives us a trajectory that we can follow to move forward to get as um student-centered and focused as possible. There's a lot there that we can dig into in, in further discussions, but for me, it is a good way for us to be able to say, "Where do we need to focus our efforts over the next couple of months and how are we going to track our progress in this area?" And so this is an important part of our work going forward and we'll keep coming back to you with more and more information. So, what next steps do we have? From December to January, uh, we're putting together the program of studies that will be to you before the holidays for um a review. A spoiler alert for the program of studies. With all the other work that's going on, we have targeted certain classes to add to the program of studies, but we're going to take a deep dive into that, put some things like we've talked about the Cyber Academy for next year and some individual courses, but some overhauls of programs we're going to be looking at for the 2021 school year, just so you understand that that's, that's coming up and looking forward. Um, January to May, we'll have detail, details of the master schedule that's being designed. Uh, the, we are empowered to roll out, so we're rolling out our one-to-one devices for all of our uh ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students after the first of the year, which lines up directly with personalized learning. It's not students on devices all day long, but it is an avenue for kids to be able to be personalized. Um, and then we'll have regular updates to the board and a May presentation with schedule details, some specifics. And at that point, we'd have a three-year plan with our assessment criteria of how we analyze and assess the work that we've got going on. Um, I know that's a lot. I've sprinted through those things because we've got a lot of work going on. Uh, but I do appreciate your support and be open to any questions you might have.
Keith, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to participate. It's, it has been good work. Uh, I do want to stress that one of our guiding principles has been sustainability. Whatever we put into place, we want that, to be sure that that's guiding our pathway. And there has been tremendous work from the ground up, which has been really kind of neat to see. I suggested, just so we could all keep up with the language, the terminology list, and if there are other terms that um the board would like to hear about, we can add those. There's a lot of educational jargon that's gone into the conversation and so we want to make sure everyone has a common language to be discussing this.
Thank you.
I just want to, I appreciate all the work you've done and all of the stakeholders who've been involved, especially the student voice. I do think that's really important and it is, it was a sprint, but we see some kind of big picture.
Did the other thing, oh geez, sorry. The other thing I'll say too is uh when I was at, at West Freshman today, and Kelly, you saw it when you were there, it's just the buzz in the room when the teachers that are here and the kids and the administrators are all sitting around a table huddled and trying to make things better than what they are now. It's like powerful. And I lurk and I listen. I try not to say anything because um the ideas that they're generating, generating together are just extremely powerful. So, thank you. And there's more of you, but the two of you that came tonight and the principals that are involved, just appreciate that work. And this is definitely going to make us better, but it is a lot of work. It's a heavy lift, as John was talking about.
It's changing a whole way of thinking and I think it had to start at the ground up, which has been really neat.
The, the other thing I'll say too is this is the work that I think our business community likes us doing and hearing about because they want the workforce, whether it's um, no matter what kind of job, right? Um, they see what's coming and uh we're trying to produce a better quality uh student once they graduate, so.
We had um, we ended up with three prototype teams that we'll come back to tomorrow to present. Uh, and two of the three of those groups of mixes of students and teachers elected a student to be their project manager. So, you're talking fifteen or eighteen people and they all, two of the three elected a student to be their project manager for the whole team, which I thought was humbling.
It's a real-life job skill.
It is, totally.
I do want to stress too that they've made plans to engage a lot of other targeted groups within the community so that there's also an opportunity for the community to weigh in as well. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
This is the first opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board with anything that is related to an item on the agenda, they may do so at this point in time. Seeing no one, we'll go to uh board reports, board policy.
We are still in the process trying to get a, do we have, do we have a second reading?
Just first.
First reading. Oh, first reading, okay. We do also need to still get the Policy Committee meeting on the schedule so that we can discuss the two items that we talked about previously. So, if we could maybe try to get that organized at some point so we can get it. I think our next one's supposed to be scheduled for two Fridays from now, but see if that works.
Some of the policies that you see in front of you, you have thirty-three policies for first read, which we go three, four months with none, and then all of a sudden we have thirty-three. Uh, of the thirty-three, thirty-one of them are Niola updates that we went over in the Fall Update. Uh, another one is our own Lakota update we've made. And then another one that you have in front of you is a Niola removal uh that they've taken off. And so just a couple of highlights real quick. Um, one of, one of the earliest ones, the ones that start with zero ones, those are all legislative-related to the operations of the board. And these deal around with updates dealing with, uh, believe it or not, one of them is including language to make sure the public's aware that board members are covered by board policies. Uh, so, things like that. Also, updates and provisions of Ohio ethics laws have been added. And then also adding emergency meeting language uh and also regarding notice of special meetings and also about how to recess and adjournment. So, all of those changes incorporate about six different policies that you see in front of you. Uh, some of the other changes deal with statutory language, dealing with sunshine law interpretations, um, and then also dealing with public participation and uh giving the presiding officer rights to run the meeting without disruption. Then four other policies deal with uh the requirement for employees to have and maintain current license for a position of employment. Uh, eight policies deal with the district's responsibility to maintain uh records whenever investigating complaints or allegations of discrimination. Uh, we have five policies that deal with the changes to and updates to the ESSA, Every Child, I'm sorry, Every Student Succeeds Act. Uh, revisions include definitions and also focus on parent, family engagement and data collection and reporting requirements by the district. Uh, there's also another change in there dealing with the Ohio Department um and US Department of Transportation languages. There's four policies that deal with student discipline and those are all revisions required by House Bill three eighteen. That deals more with the uh suspension of students in grades K three, so updating our language that adheres to that House bill. And then another uh update dealing with a report of misconduct as far as it deals with dual-licensed individuals. For example, if a nurse uh is under investigation, we're required to report that to the Ohio Department of Education and also the Nursing Board that she would be part of. So, it's just adding that language to ensure that's taken care of. Uh, the Lakota policy that's added is the ninety-seven hundred distribution of materials. Uh, this was researched by our Media Communications Department and you've seen the beginning use of Peachjar, which before our policy prohibited the use of for-profit groups. Now, by using Peachjar, it gives for-profit groups an avenue to send out their materials to our families, whereas before strictly for nonprofits. So, we've opened the doors to allow for-profit groups to begin to, to reach out to our, our families. Um, and the policy twenty-seven hundred, that is the one that is being deleted uh due to the changes of the ESSA language being in all of the other policies. Niola has removed that policy since it's out of date, no longer needed. So, as Mr. Lovell uh mentioned, we do have a couple, a couple of policies we still need to review, uh dealing with cash balances, reserves, and booster organizations. And then there's still a couple of purchase bidding and credit card ones that we need to finalize as well that we have planned to take care of on December seventh meeting, if not before then.
December seventh? Yeah, the policy is that one.
It's going to be that morning.
And that date works for me, if it still works for everybody else. December 7th?
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday. 10:30 to noon.
That's a policy meeting?
A policy meeting.
Policy, and then we were going to do finance at noon.
Okay.
Yeah.
So confused. Okay.
Brad?
Yes.
It would be very helpful when we have this many policies to review or even when there are multiple policies, if there was a, if they were grouped by category or topic.
Okay.
Rather than just the numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Got you.
Anything else on policy? All right, community engagement?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
I don't believe we've had a DPC meeting since our last meeting, correct? Okay. We have had three community conversations since our last meeting. Theater, safety, and last week, social media with our students, which is so impressive because things find their way around anything and that's a little scary. But that was pretty informative. And then we have a bunch coming up. November 26th, we have a strategic plan one at 6:30. The 27th in the afternoon, we have Liberty Junior staff and plane staff. The 29th, we have Ridge and Hopewell staff. On December 5th at 6:30, we have the LGPDQ one. And then in January, we have adverse childhood experiences on students, January 10th. And then we have January 22nd, the role of band and instrumental music in the K-12 experience. So that's all coming up and those times and dates are on the website. The only one we don't have a place for in my notes is the 26th, we don't have it yet.
Okay.
To my knowledge. That's the last I heard of.
No questions?
No. No doubt they were not listening.
Can't accuse us of not listening.
That's right, we've got a lot of conversations coming on.
Butler Tech?
Butler Tech will meet tomorrow evening.
I would say too that with Butler Tech, I had a superintendent meeting last Friday and they went through the whole admission process with the superintendents and something that they've changed and tried to get better at. So it was good, it was good to see.
We've had a lot of conversation about capacity.
Anything from higher meetings you want to talk about or?
No, just wanted to thank you for participating in the all-boards meeting in October. That was a great opportunity to show off what's happening at Butler Tech. See what future plans are.
Finance committee?
We're meeting December 7th, tentatively.
December 7th at noon and the plans for that meeting will be to start our conversation around the cash balance policy, so.
Legislative?
Legislative committee has not met, however. Matt, do you have anything?
Just that I know that during lame duck, they're going to take care of the graduation requirements is what everyone tells me. So hopefully that comes out here in the next day or so. I do have a BASSA legislative meeting scheduled for tomorrow that we all got another follow-up email on today saying you guys need to come. So hopefully have more about that this time tomorrow. They're also going to talk to us about with the change in the governor's position and what that looks like and sort of coming attractions for public education. I will say, and I think most of you were there, if not all of you were there at Capitol Conference, when we heard from John Houston, who will be the lieutenant governor, I was impressed with his comments and what he said about they're listening and they want to be working with us and partners, so I took that as a good sign.
I'm into that main, the school funding work group that I'm a part of, which is now going to be titled the Patterson Roadmap to School Funding CPR, so.
Was that my design?
That's Africa, yes.
I know, it just kind of ended up that way. And so we have started meeting with the new governors.
Transition team.
Transition team, that's the word I was looking for. And so we're starting that, pulling back together to do, the work continues, I guess, so.
And as part of the OSBA conference, Butler Tech did a series of legislative visits and networking and had an opportunity to meet with Representatives Blessing, Lang, Keller's office, Representative Patterson, and Senators Coley and Brenner. And then also met with Sarah Corruthers, who will be stepping into West Rutherford's position. And we met with her on Wednesday of last week, just to brief her on what's happening with Butler Tech and begin to initiate her on education issues in Ohio. She was still walking when she left, so it was all good. So they were, they were good visits. And when I do visit on behalf of Butler Tech, I do always make a point of talking about my home school as well, so.
A few, a few meetings ago, I mentioned that I would capture opportunities at OSBA for the board, upcoming opportunities and things. So and I told you I'd be bringing a piece of paper with that. So what I did was I basically went onto their site, looked at some of the upcoming meetings that are offered. So basically professional development, board development stuff. There are four that I made note of. There's a lot of stuff on there. So you're more welcome to go on there and kind of go through them. But I just took the four that I felt would be most maybe appropriate for us or would pertain to us. Take it for what it's worth, some of them may or may not apply to you. Board docs, they're having an actual kind of training for board members. It's going to be a webinar, so if it's something you just want to click on, it's free. There's human resource for board members coming up in December up at the OSBA offices. There's Board Member 101 and Board Member 201, and those are all local ones. And I'm actually going to go to the 201. I think it's a Saturday, so we have to commit to that. But it's $190 and it's at the Hilton Garden Inn in Miami'sburg, so it's super close. And it takes you from kind of that past the first year board member on, boardmanship and things like that. So I put those on here. I can also email this document out to you as well, all as well, so you can have that. The other thing that I did as well, I'm sure we all receive all those legislative emails, I'm assuming we do. I know I do and they're kind of overwhelming and I appreciate Linda kind of recapping at the meeting. What I did was I just consolidated those things onto the same piece of paper. So you can see the legislative updates on here along with the board opportunities at the top. So if it's helpful, let me know. If it's not helpful, I don't have to do it. It didn't take that much energy. It was just capturing it from different places and trying to figure out what is most appropriate for us to know. And I tried to keep it as clean as possible because there is a lot going on. There's just a lot to know.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep, my pleasure. And if anybody wants to go to Board Member 201 with me.
I may go with you.
On Saturday.
Oh, I may go with you on that.
I was hoping maybe it was during the week.
Anything else? Maybe that's it.
Like Brad?
Diversity committee?
We have a meeting coming up Monday, November 26th. I also want to thank Lodi and Miami BOA for the Community University that they held last Saturday on understanding gender expansive youth. Heard from a lot of medical professionals, Children's Hospital, parents and the kids. And probably had 60 or 70 people there and it went very, very well. I learned a lot and it went well, so kudos to them. That's all I had.
All right, OSBA Capitol Conference debrief. We all went up to, the Ohio School Board Association has an annual conference and it was last Sunday through Tuesday. And so we all had an opportunity to go up and there are different learning sessions. So everyone's kind of on their own schedule. Some of the items we overlapped on, but others we all were in different sessions. So we wanted to have an opportunity here to do a little bit of a debrief and share some thoughts and ideas of what we had learned. So we wanted, so I apologize, this, with the sunshine laws, this is our only opportunity to do that. So you get to sit through a little bit of our learning session sharing here, so. Linda, would you like to start?
No, I'd be happy to let somebody else talk first. No one else, it's fine.
I went to five sessions. It's no secret, I am not a fan of OSBA Board and Capitol Conference. I think that organization has blown school boards up to be something it were never meant to be. And that's no secret, I've never kept that in my body. I don't like the school board system as it is. However, I did go to Jenny's bionic salary schedule thing, I did a great job. I went to one, it was a sales pitch, we don't think I mentioned to you before. But I did go to a couple of special education, athletic department success, compliance. And then the Twitter ed chat thing that you and Brad and Landon. And all those were good. Nothing new, nothing you don't already know. It does reinforce my thought that in almost every area, we're leading the way, we're doing it right. So that was, that was cool to see. That's all I have.
To piggyback off of that, I would agree in the fact that when you go to conferences like this, you do have this bit of pride for our district and the things that we're doing on our district. And you do see how Lakota is leading the way in a lot of different areas. I had the opportunity obviously to go to a lot of different sessions. There were two that really stood out to me besides the ed chat one, I thought that stood out. But one was Cheryl Ryan, who had come down and had done some OSBA kind of boardmanship stuff with us. She did another, she did another session and it was a little bit different. And Kelly, if you want to talk a little bit, I knew you attended as well. But really talking about areas of highly effectiveness with your boards and how you can get to that point. And she talked about, I think there were nine different indicators, which I thought were really good. And I also believe that they would be really, and I sent it actually to PowerPoint to all of you when we were up at the conference and talking about, could we think about doing that for our work sessions and looking at some of those points to have further discussion about. The second, the second session I went to that I just found really interesting and it's up in Springborough Community Schools. They did an entire session on a leadership development program that they offer in their schools. And I know we've got a lot of great things going on in Lakota. I was fascinated by, basically, they generated this program or created this program because they had an issue with people leaving their district to seek further leadership opportunities, whether that was assistant principal, principalship, principalship or central office. And they were trying to figure out how they could create something internal that would grow their people and that could create a more sufficient or successful pipeline in their district. And so anyways, what they did was they basically put together this team. They offer 15 spots a year and they have about 35 people to apply for it. But this group has to do a capstone project. And you have, in these groups, you have everything from central office administrators down to teachers. And so it's kind of this group of like-minded people in different opportunities and levels throughout the district. So the diversity and thought in that group is really big. And so anyways, it's a year commitment. They do a lot of different things. They learn about school law, school finance. They get an opportunity to create this capstone project that will give back to their schools. And then when they get done with that, it's kind of a badge of honor, something that they hold and that they're able to take and apply with future jobs. So anyways, long story short, I went to it because I just thought it'd be fascinating to see what other.
Longer and longer.
Yeah, right? To kind of see what other districts are doing in that leadership pipeline stuff. Because I know that in Lakota, we've talked about that before and just right up the street, they got some good stuff going on. So it was fun to be able to connect with them.
So Brad, I'm curious about what drove the district to do this? Was it the cost of professional development outside of the district?
It wasn't. From what I understood from when the superintendent was talking, he said that there was a culture in the district there of hiring from outside. And what they saw was happening is that the people inside the district didn't see the opportunity. And so they wanted to shift the practice and to develop their people. Plus they started to see the cost as well of outside hiring and human resources directly related to that. And so they wanted to create a better culture within their district to hire from within.
So that was through professional development?
Somewhere, yeah.
Sounds like a little, little bit of that is like Leadership 21.
Yes.
Capstone project, different sessions, similar.
I connected, I connected with them post because I just wanted to talk more on it. From what I understand, their next meeting is going to be down at their law firm's offices and they spend the day in those offices and they hear from the attorneys in the different areas of school law. And then they do kind of a retreat during that day and then they actually Skype in some professional speakers and things like that as well. So they leverage their business partnerships and the people they're connected to, very similar to Leadership 21 or any other type of program. But I was just impressed with kind of how, how put together it was and I had never heard of it. And they're a few miles up the street, so that's the power of sometimes being up at a conference like that as well.
I went to a lot of sessions too and Brad and I did go to the OSBA Cheryl Ryan one. Of course Jenny's was good and the ed chat one was excellent. I really liked Cheryl Ryan's and I really will agree with Brad that we should as well try to have a work session and incorporate some of those things. And you can always improve. I mean, we don't need to rest on our laurels always. I think there's always room for improvement and there's always room, you know, to get us to the point where we are, highly effective. I love that term. I also liked Matt's spotlight and I'm not just saying that because he's sitting right there with the superintendent from Hilliard. Because again, I feel like it speaks to what we're already doing, thinking differently, thinking outside the box of what a student experience should be and what we're looking to do as a district. We're not trying to be a cookie cutter and I was impressed that, you know, it was a good session because it's, you get up and move around and you, you know, you have participation. So it's not just a sit and get, so that's my takeaway.
I think Lakota had a lot of things to celebrate with the design thinking for actual leaders that Matt did as the keynote kickoff. And then we also had Chris Bissarch and our Officer Newman did a session on safety. And that was sort of an interesting, I'll say yang and yang between, between building our, our buildings as fortresses with no glass and no, no entry points and making them effective for positive learning environments. And how, you know, they talked about the architects who, staff and many architects want open spaces and lots of glass because that's, there's data that says that that helps with the learning environment. But then you have security people who say, you know, no windows on the first floor. And, and so that was a very interesting discussion on, you know, how do you balance those needs and demands? And different people have different opinions. So it created a very interesting conversation of what do you do to assess your risk? And how do you balance all those needs when it comes to safety? But Chris did a good job of leading in that discussion. And again, having, when you look at, we had those two sessions featured, the social media, the Hope Squad. And then within the learning session of 100 groups, we had, well, I guess 110. We had our, the folks who were doing the drumming as well as then two other groups, our artists and our robotic hand groups featured. So we were very well represented within the student success fair as well, so that was nice to see. Within the keynote speakers, we had Gina Davis speak, who talked about women and how they're represented in the media. And it was a very interesting conversation and talked about how when she meets with studio executives, they say that the problem is fixed and that there's not an issue with women being underrepresented. But she actually now has taken her voice and actually done research and shown that even in crowd scenes and animated shows for children, that women only represent 20% of those in the crowd scenes when you actually do the, do the research, you know? Because that's what, that's what her business now has done in this research that she's doing. And she was saying how, you know, when you first talk to these media folks, they're like, no, we fixed the problem. But when you actually look at the data and quantify it, that it hasn't been fixed and they're shocked. And how she's using her voice to address that problem when she became a mom and was doing this for her daughter. And that's where she saw it when she was a mom, you know? And not to interrupt you, Julie, but I'm going to. When her daughter started watching like animated, you know, Disney shows and Teletubbies and all of that, she said the unrepresentation of women was unbelievable and just strong role models. And my, the best statistic she said is that they did a study that when boys watch some of these childhood shows. that when boys watch some of these childhood shows, their self-esteem goes way up. And when girls watch them, their self-esteem and confidence goes way down, because there's just no strong role models. So that was an interesting conversation. And then there was another keynote speaker that I enjoyed enough that I bought his book, called The Third Door, which was Alex Vanahan, who was a college student, who said he had been sort of told he was going to be a doctor from the time he was born. So he said he was kind of on that track, and always headed down that track, and never really thought he had an alternative to that track. And he got into college, was a biology major, studied for his finals with all his bio books, and thought, I don't want to be on this track. And he made a statement, something to the effect of, you've got to be careful if you're a pebble rolling down a track because it's one you chose, or if it's a road that somebody else chose for you. And so it was an interesting story of how he changed his track and set out to interview successful people in different fields. And how instead of going in the front door or the side door, they found the third door. So he named his book The Third Door. And he's interviewed Bill Gates, from Bill Gates to Lady Gaga, to a whole bunch of different people. And he's only 25 years old, and has now met all these folks and published this book. So it was a fascinating story of how he actually won the Price is Right, sold his prize winnings, used it to fund this project, and now managed to get access to all these folks. He certainly used the third door to get in. So that was an interesting one for me. But Todd, if you want to put up that slide that I had, I did a lot of track on school funding, that always, again, sort of my passion. And one, the Public Finance Resources is a group that looks at school funding in Ohio. They're known for that. And they did a whole presentation on what school boards should look at in the five-year forecast. And then they do this school budget report card, which is kind of interesting. And they talked a lot about what we should be doing. And again, like Todd said, you always feel good when you go up there because you're like, yep, check that box. Talked about adjusting staff to make sure that we're responding to students' ratios. They talked about healthcare costs. They talked a lot about purchase services, and how you don't have a lot of control over those, and how they're really skyrocketing in that impact. They talked about healthcare costs. And it made me feel incredibly fortunate that we are where we are with those. They talked a lot about right now, how the funding formula, you cannot have the wealth of your district change at all, but it's all about where you are relative to everybody else, and how that's really a problem right now. That, you know, if another district gets, loses some wealth, you can look wealthier relative to another district, and that impacts your wealth. But I thought that this was fascinating. This shows where Lakota falls relative to other districts. And it certainly gave us strong marks in all these areas in our report card when I pulled it up. And this was a site they suggested we go to. And if you looked at it, it gave us a very strong mark in our report card. So I wanted to share that with everyone as well. So kind of an interesting, interesting area. So the website, if anybody is interested to poke around, is www.pfrcfo.com. So it's the financial report card from the Board Leadership Institute.
What is it again, Julie?
PFRCFO. So for Public Finance Resources CFO. So again, that was one that was particularly interesting to me, being the school funding nerd. So that's what I wanted to share. Want me to go down the table for another view?
No, welcome. It does make me think maybe we need to bring Wonder Woman back, though, based on what you were saying about Gina Davis speaking. Todd, do we have?
Thank you.
So I had the opportunity to moderate for these upstanding gentlemen. And the one on the far right is our student Landon Meter. And he actually made the other two look maybe a little negative by comparison. I'm just teasing. Actually, you all three did a great job explaining about the Twitter Ed Chat, and it was a great conversation. You saw people very engaged in the whole audience. So I wanted to applaud you in front of the room that you did a great job on that.
At 8:00 AM.
At 8:00 AM. So we had three student groups at our Student Achievement Fair. This first group was one of our high school students demonstrating what they're doing with the Design Arts. This was our group of fifth graders that are constructing, they're a little hard to see on this picture, but they're constructing prosthetic hands, which are sent to another country to help children that have lost limbs. And they were very passionate about it, very excited about it. And it was neat that they were learning at the same time they were engaged in service projects. And the next group, this is our, can we go ahead and play that? Thank you. We can all start tapping our feet. This was a very inexpensive way to try to take some of that pencil tapping that kids are doing in class, and do something constructive with it. They're actually using plastic paint pails, which was kind of amazing. And I was asked at the end of the day, by the way, if our kids might be interested in being considered for the regional conference to perform for all of them. I said yes, of course. So we may perhaps get a chance to see them again. I attended the design thinking, as you all did, and that was a great conversation with the people sitting around the table. My group was about leadership, and good conversation about who was driving the change, and how the change was being incorporated after it was being driven, and how to change a culture. So it was good conversation. I think you did a great job on that, Matt facilitating, very energizing. Also attended the 2018 case law update, several security pieces, and also some work on property valuation cases, some history of how it had been done before, and what's being done now in terms of state law. And I was the official representative for the OSBA Delegate Assembly, which is where the officers for the state are elected, and any changes to the legislative platform are approved. So it was a busy three days, I think, for all of us. Glad that everyone was able to come up for them. That's all I have.
I'm just going to add, I've been in the district since 2011. And I will say that this conference was different for me than any other. Because, and I think everybody's been saying it, we are doing things right, and we have great things to share from our students. We had student groups there, which was different for us. We were presenting several times on several different topics. It felt different, and it felt good. So that's my takeaway.
Echo everything that everyone said around the table. Just to recap, we had Lakota presence at eight different sessions of the eight. Five had our students involved, which I think is really good. So back to what you were saying. The only other section that I'll point out that I want to delve more into, that was on confidence in girls, different from Gina Davis, but a whole group that does things about how the confidence in young women wanes from about fifth grade, and it just drops off, and it's a dramatic drop, and they don't get it back. And so I want to find out more about that.
Any other final thoughts? All right, with that, we'll move to the approval of board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval of board meeting minutes? A motion, for a second? Hold on a second. Jenny, pick that one.
Mrs. Casper? Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Before we move on, I'd like to ask something about Treasure. So we had an article come out in the Pulse Journal, a column that Jenny had written last week in the Pulse Journal, and I've received several questions about it, which I forwarded on to Jenny and ask her to talk about a few of those pieces tonight. If you would, please.
Sure. I know one of the questions was around, our largest expenditure is wages and benefits. And in the column, it says, "We are projecting a 3.35% increase in wages for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and assuming a 3% for the remaining two years." And Linda even said, you know, "Some people are wondering if we can add." I just want to make sure, I want to make sure people understand, we can add. The way that this works, and I'm going to break it down. And first of all, I'm going to say, in the notes to the five-year forecast, this is broken down pretty clearly, but in a column, you can only state so many words. So I want to go into the explanation, just to make sure people understand. So we have two different unionized groups where we have contracts that cover three-year periods. And those contracts, when you look at the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment, and the base increase for those three years, and then I do a weighted average as well, that amounts to a 4.6% increase per year, weighted average. But historically, we have had a net change because when people retire and we hire new, there's a savings. And so reflected in, that's why when we look at that, when people say, can you do math? It's not that total amount. We take a look at, what is that savings, that net change? And so what is reflected in that 3.35% that is projected, is taking that weighted average and saying that we're going to assume that we're going to have a savings of 1.25%, which comes back to the 3.35. We have historically seen 2% savings, and then last year, it was about 1.5%. So I'm even being conservative with the 1.25% savings to come to that net. But I just wanted to kind of go over that so that we're on record, making sure that...
And that number's actually referring to the total increase in the entire budget?
Absolutely.
And not to what the individual compensation is of all those pieces you just mentioned to individual staff members?
That's correct. This reflects the total overall expenditures for wages. So that includes stipends, supplementals, our, even subs for our classified staff. And so it includes everything.
Any increases or decreases in the number of staff?
Absolutely. That's an all-in, yeah. Was there anything else? I was just trying to...
The 95%.
And so the 95% on, the 95% of schools in Ohio are showing a spending deficit in year five or before. So after our last board meeting, Adam Zink, I asked him to go in, once everybody filed their five-year forecast, which takes a little while, to pull in data so that we could see, how do we kind of stack up with all the other districts? And as well as, so that we would have data when we pull in the finance committee, and we're looking at our fund balance policy, so that we would have data to support that work as well. And so this is one of those pieces that we pulled in and came out with that data mining, if you will. We're also looking at fund balance in all of those years, and number of days of cash for all of the districts as well. So that's where that came from.
So I will add, after our discussion, what Jenny said was 95% of our districts have been or are showing a spending deficit. 5% are not, and that adds up to 16 districts, I think?
Yes, 16 districts do not show a spending deficit for the three years of history, plus the five.
And Lakota has been, in the past six years, showing no deficit. So we have dropped out of that column at this point. And I've also had a question about, did I trust Jenny's numbers and figures? And why did I vote no against the magnitude forecast? And I want to clarify, and I think I said it at the meeting, but I'd like to say it again. I have complete confidence in her numbers. And it's for that reason that I believe that she's accurate, that we will be showing a deficit. And I am concerned about it. It was meant to shine a spotlight on it. It was not in any way to cast doubt on whether or not I believed in your forecast. It's because I believe in your forecast. So thank you for the good conversation, Jenny.
Yes, thank you. And if anybody else has any other questions, you know, like I said, when you're writing a column, there's only so many words that you can put in there. So if you get any other questions, please do them our way.
Yeah, we can, Ann.
Did anybody else receive questions about the article?
I did not.
Okay.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
Superintendent's recommendations, action items. We have the approval of personnel items, memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office, and approval of donations. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Are there any material changes to this contract with the Sheriff's Office?
No. Just be open.
That's what I thought.
Title question. The supplementals listed on the personnel. Are those negotiated as part of our contract, the dollar amount?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
This brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, I'll move to closing comments. Where I started last time? Let me go right. I got nothing. Again, proud of our kids at Capitol Conference. I forgot to say that in my little word, but that was pretty impressive.
I don't have any comments either, but I'm very enjoying the holiday this week. Same here.
I just want to say a thank you to the high school redesign team for all the good work, and we look forward to seeing that continue.
I just want to say congratulations to Julie Schaefer for being honored this past Friday night as a woman of excellence. So I think that's worthy of mentioning Julie. So congratulations on that.
Congratulations. I will point out too, Megan Zany's, who was also a woman of excellence, is a 2015 Lakota West graduate. And her mother works at Central Office, so we're very proud for the family, proud for you as well. So that's it.
Again, as we go into Thanksgiving, I wanted to say how thankful I am for all the hard work everyone's doing. We came out today with our November video of a look around Lakota. And as you watch that, it's always hard, and I always think how hard it is to distill down everything that's happening within the district into those little snippets. But it always makes you so proud to see what's happening within the district. So if you get an opportunity to click on any of our social media, take a look at the video. Matt and Jenny were on there. And you'll be able to see actually some of the things you saw here tonight, with some of the things at Capitol Conference, and some different items. So take an opportunity to look at that. And thank you for all everyone does to support our district. So with that, we are going to move into executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of a conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent court action?
So moved. For a second? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell? Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level? Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
We will be adjourning from the executive session and will not be taking any action from after that. Thank you.